Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections. At this time, can everyone please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify today, please come up to the sergeant's desk to fill out a testimony slip. Written testimony can be emailed to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Good morning and welcome to the meeting of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections. I'm City Councilmember Keith Powers, Chair of this committee. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce the other members of this committee who are present with us here today. We're joined by Speaker Adrian Adams, Minority Leader Joe Borelli of Staten Island, who we wish to feel better with COVID. We are joined by Councilmember Selena Brooks-Powers, Councilmember Salamanca, Councilmember Sanchez, and we will be joined by others shortly. I'd like to acknowledge the committee staff that worked on the appointments that we're going to be hearing today, Committee Counsel Jeff Campania, Associate General Counsel Peter Torre, Director of Investigations Francesca Del Vecchia, and Deputy Director of Investigations Alicia Vass. Today, we're holding a public hearing on three nominations submitted for appointment, one for the Board of Elections, and two appointments by the council for the Board of Corrections. By a letter dated December 29, 2022, the chairperson of the New York Democratic County Committee submitted to the councils his certification that Carol Edmead is recommended for appointment by the council as Commissioner of the Board of Elections. We'll also consider the candidacies of Deanna Hoskins and Dr. Rachel Bedard for appointment by the council to the Board of Correction, and want to take a second to congratulate all of you on your nominations. Before we start and I explain more about the entities that we're discussing today, I want to hand it over and recognize Speaker Adrian Adams to offer opening remarks.
Thank you, Chair Powers, and good morning to everyone. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues on the committee and extend my thanks to the committee staff for their work on today's hearing. Thank you all very much. I'd also like to extend my personal welcome to all of the candidates who are here before us today. Welcome. First, we're joined by Judge Carol Edmead, a distinguished and experienced jurist and former presiding justice over the appellate term first judicial department, who has been recommended by the New York City County Democratic Committee for Appointment as a Commissioner of the Board of Elections. The Board of Elections has a vital role in New York City government. By law, BOE is responsible for canvassing and certifying the vote, as well as voter registration, outreach, and processing, as well as ensuring that each voter's right to vote at the polls or by absentee ballot is protected. Secondly, I'd like to also welcome Dr. Rachel Bedard and Ms. Deanna Hoskins, who are candidates for appointment by the council as board members for the Board of Correction. The Board of Correction is a uniquely powerful body within the framework of city government. The Board is a citizen watchdog agency, which carries out independent oversight and passes regulations through New York City jails. By law, the Board has the power and duty to inspect and visit all institutions and facilities under the jurisdiction of the Department of Correction, as well as establish minimum standards for the care, custody, correction, treatment, and supervision and discipline of all those held in the custody of DOC. Ms. Deanna Hoskins has been nominated for board membership for the Board of Correction and joins us today, having spent decades in leadership in the criminal justice field, beginning with her work with House of Hope Incorporated, and then with the Indiana DOC, all geared towards the improvement of both mental health, but also the quality of life in correctional facilities. A formerly incarcerated person herself, Ms. Hoskins was a senior policy advisor for United States DOJ in their Corrections and Reentry Program. She continues this work as current president and CEO of Just Leadership USA, which is dedicated to educating, elevating, and empowering the people and communities most impacted by systemic racism to drive meaningful and lasting policy reform to reduce mass incarceration. Dr. Rachel Bedard has dedicated her career to the cause of improving correctional health care. A physician and internist, Dr. Bedard was most recently Director of the Geriatrics and Complex Care Service at Correctional Health Services, a division of New York Health and Hospitals that provides health care in the city's jail system. Dr. Bedard has been devoted to the health and welfare of incarcerated people, providing clinical care and health-based legal advocacy to the 200 oldest and sickest patients in the New York City's jail system. She is the Executive Director of Families United for Freedom, and also a research fellow for the Institute to End Mass Incarceration at Harvard Law School. Dr. Bedard was named one of Fortune Magazine's Heroes of the Pandemic and a Crane's Empire Hold Health Hero in 2020 for her work advocating for mass decarceration during the first wave of the COVID-19 pandemic. I sincerely thank you all for your commitment to public service and welcome. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, we're now turn to the Board of Elections. The Board of Elections consists of 10 commissioners, two from each of the city's five counties. Each commissioner serves a term of four years or until a successor is appointed. Commissioners shall be registered voters in the county for which they are appointed and registered as a member of the political party for which they are nominated. The New York Democratic County Democratic Committee submitted a valid certificate of party recommendation to us on January 4, 2023. If the council as a whole does not act within 30 days of receiving a valid certificate of recommendation, the applicable political party conference within the council becomes empowered to approve a recommendation of its own. The Board and its commissioners are responsible for the maintenance and administration of voting records and elections. The Board also exercises quasi-judicial powers by conducting hearings to validate nominating petitions of candidates per nomination to elective office. The Board is required to make an annual report of its affairs and proceedings to the city council. Commissioners receive a $300 per DM for each day's attendance at meetings of the Board or any of its committees, with a maximum of $30,000 per year. Today, we're joined by a nominee, Judge Carol Edmead, a resident of Manhattan, fantastic borough, if I do say so myself, who has been nominated by the New York County Democratic Party for the appointment to the Board of Elections to serve the remainder of a four-year term that expires on December 31, 2024. Congratulations to you on your nomination, or my condolences, whichever one makes, better sense. With that being said, before we move forward, I just want to ask you to raise your right hand, so we can administer the affirmation. Just raise your...
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this subcommittee and answer to all council member questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. We'll now recognize you to give an opening statement, and then followed by that, we'll have some questions from the council members.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving me a few moments of your time to speak with you concerning my nomination as a Board of Elections Commissioner representing New York County. I am a New York, I am a native New Yorker, born in Flushing, Queens, raised in Queensbridge Houses in Long Island City, which at the time, I don't know if it still is, was the largest public housing development in the nation. Good morning, Councilwoman Brewer, from the Upper West Side. And for the past 37 years, I've been a resident of Park West Village on the Upper West Side. I have had a pretty circuitous path to this point. I attended New York City Public Schools, City College, the jewel on the hill, and accepted into Columbia University Teachers College doctoral program. Upon graduation from City College, I was hired in the English Department at Medgar Evers College in Brooklyn, New York. Medgar Evers at that time was in its nascent stage of development, and I enjoyed immensely being a part of the early development of Medgar Evers College. After 10 years at Medgar Evers, I decided to pursue, I think it was The Road, The Road Not Taken. And when I graduated from City College, I took both the LSAT and the GRE, and I went to Columbia. After 10 years of teaching at Medgar Evers, I decided to pursue law. I needed more challenge, quite frankly. So, I enrolled in Brooklyn Law School. For my three years at Brooklyn Law School, I taught full-time at night and on the weekends, and attended law school full-time in the day. For the past almost quarter century, I've served the people of the city and state of New York as a jurist, following justice and fairness through law, trying to foster justice and fairness through law. For more than a decade, I've been the Supreme Court Judge handling the election law cases. I've seen many of you, yes, not only in New York County, but oftentimes, I've handled election law cases for the entire city of New York. In 2020, I was appointed Presiding Judge of the Appellate Term New York County. The Appellate Term handles matters from lower criminal, LNT, and lower civil court. And for the past year, I've served not only simultaneously as the Presiding Judge of the Appellate Term in New York County and the Acting Surrogate Judge in Kings County. That was a lot. My goal, if appointed to the Board of Elections as a Commissioner, is to serve all the people of the city of New York without prejudice or preference. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to questions, I also want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilwoman Gail Brewer. We're now going to go to Speaker Adrian Adams to kick us off for questions.
Thank you so much, Chair Powers, and good morning again.
Morning again.
Judge, what was your experience with the Board of Election as a candidate running for office?
Well, as a candidate, that was when I ran for civil court decades ago. I think decades. It was, I think, I have to look at my resume only. I think it was 1990. Anyway, decades ago when I ran for City Civil Court Judge. It was fine. You know, I went out, met everyone, worked around, showed up, talked at the various clubs, and was nominated as their candidate for civil court judge. It was a very pleasant, nothing untoward, very pleasant experience.
I was going to ask if there were any obstacles, but it doesn't sound like there were any obstacles that you can share.
None at all, none from, of course, none from, not of course, but none from the Board of Elections, but none on the street, on the ground, meeting people, talking to people, you know, encouraging them, giving them information about me. But some of the people on the Upper West Side were familiar, because prior to running for civil court judge, I was the president of Three Parks Independent Democrats on the Upper West Side. So, I was already active in the community, working with people, hearing what they needed to say. And I was also, I think, Gail, I don't know if you, Councilwoman Brewer, sorry.
Gail was not.
No, no, it's not. I was on Community Board Seven. So, I've been active in service all the time, until, as you know, when you become a judge, you become cloistered, and you have no political activity, which is to ensure that you don't bring any bias or prejudice to the job.
Right. So, fast forward now to current situations. What obstacles do you see as one utilizing, per se, the Board of Election? What obstacles, what changes do you see can be brought?
Well, what I've been hearing just lately, and what sounds very concerning to people in the community, is that the Board look at and consider universal early voting sites. That is to say that you should be able to vote in any location, early voting, if you are a registered voter. And that, as I've noted in the questionnaire that was given to me from your group, I indicated that before that could possibly really be considered seriously, you have to ensure that there's no anti-fraud, because it's all computer, and also anti-protective of privacy. But it's something to be considered, to make it easier, facilitate people being able to go out and vote. The other thing I've heard is that they'd like the Board to look at and consider limiting the movement of the voting sites, so that it doesn't cause either confusion, or disorientation, or lack of familiarity of voters with where to go. Oh, the site has been moved, and that kind of thing can be discouraging.
I'm going to include also, and those are great points, I'm going to include also from personal experience, that I think that there needs to be greater inspection with the Board of Election when it comes to the specific polling sites. For, you know, for my druthers in Southeast Queens, particularly, for those with disabilities, for seniors. In my polling place, it is extremely difficult for seniors to maneuver in the space that they have to vote. And we know that our seniors do come out.
Well, I'm one of them, so yes.
Soon to join you. But I'm just going to put that out there also.
I made a note. I agree. I agree. Facilitating the availability and the, really, the availability and flexibility of polling sites is so endemic to people wanting to vote. If it's made more convenient, more flexible, more available, more people might take advantage of it. I know there's, the numbers are not anything close to what the number of the citizens in the city of New York and the number of voter turnout is not, is not parallel by any means. And anything that could be done to facilitate increasing the number of voters, making it more available, making it easier, it should be considered.
Along those lines, I'm glad you brought that up. I had a conversation with someone yesterday over something along these lines, and noticing, not just in New York, but across the whole country, the numbers of voting participation when it comes to black voters. Do you have any recommendations for the city of New York in how to increase those numbers in getting folks out to vote?
A lot of it is, you know, a lot of it is getting the word out. I'd like to have come up with one word for getting the word out, but I'm not going to take my time and go through language, which I love. But the thing is, you know, getting the information out first, multilingual, multilingual in all the communities, in the ways and places where they frequent, not just on public, but the PS, public service statements in multi-languages, but getting the information out in local places, barber shops, you know, hair salons, nail salons, getting the, nail salons, I go like this, right?
I like that recommendation.
I like that one. You know, and social media. Now, you know, through getting the information out to all people in language and in words that is, that are easily understood and able to be accepted, and using local community little groups to share the information with their community, you know, you know, people who go to senior centers, you know, people who go to all kinds of, not just churches, synagogues, you know, places of faith and not of faith, getting the information out in all languages, in understandable language.
Do you think that New York should follow other jurisdictions and have absentee ballots sent out automatically?
The absentee ballot, I don't want to say yes or no, which would be the right answer to say first, but absentee ballots need to, came in, we know, with the pandemic, really was absolutely helpful and useful, to the degree that everyone gets an absentee ballot as long as it is a cost-effective activity, which I don't imagine with a budget and planning it can't be done. But getting it out to all voters, why not?
Okay. I'm going to ask one more, because I know my colleagues have questions as well. Given your background as the judge handling election law matters, what are some examples of cases that have come before you in this area?
Well, I guess the most notable one of recent, recent time was, yes, I was the judge who handled the ranked choice voting case. And in that, in that role, is in all cases, I followed the law, applied the law, and made a decision. And that's what anyone should expect from a judge, follow the law, apply the law, hear all the arguments, which, oh my gosh, the oral arguments went on and on and on, which was wonderful. I loved that thoroughly, hearing from the lawyers and hearing them challenging each other, and going through all of what the arguments are, and considering all of what was submitted, and then making a decision, and understanding that that's my decision on the law, subject to review by the appellate division, and of course, the Court of Appeals.
All right. I'm going to continue along those lines then, because you just opened up something for me. Do you believe any changes would improve ranked choice voting?
Whether there should be, I hate that I'm not answering yes or no. I know that's the way I'd like to answer, but yes or no is not always the thing that is giving the right answer, or the best answer. Whether ranked choice voting needs to be amended, mended, pended, adjusted, altered, has to be something that's first fully researched, analyzed, considered, maybe town hall meetings. Get input. Find out what's working, what's not working, who likes it, why do they like it, who hates it, why do they hate it, before any change is made. Because the last thing you want to do is make a change on high, and then pass it down and expect people to apply it, whether or not they've had, they like it or not, and where they've had no input. When people don't have input and decisions are forced on them, that's when you have problems. And whether ranked choice voting needs to be tweaked, needs to be adjusted, or is not the right thing at all, needs to be fully considered, researched, with input from people, town hall meetings, real, real information sharing, before any action is taken.
As the judge on that case, do you believe that all New York City voters have equal access to vote under ranked choice voting?
Do I believe all people have access? I don't think I know the answer. I believe ranked choice voting was implemented, put in place, but nothing has been done that I'm aware of, that has yet analyzed and reached a substantive determination on whether it's been effective. That needs to be done first, to me. I mean, it needs to be looked at in an objective, analytical, substantive way first, to see, quite honestly.
Given, given the fact that, that many New Yorkers chose not to use ranked choice voting at all, would you change your decision or your opinion on ranked choice voting at all?
Well, you see, I'd have to know that that was more than anecdotal, that, which is to say, an analysis of the ballots. I know, right after the election, some news carriers had the information, which said, you know, many people just went down and voted one person and didn't go across or didn't rank. To me, that requires more than anecdotal. I need to, I believe it should have real analysis to determine how much so. And that's not hard to do. The ballots, I hope, are still sitting somewhere where they can be analyzed and determined, did people, how people really, not just a, not just a sample, but real analysis. Did people use it or not use it? And then we could go from there, because that's the way it would be hoped that the decisions would be made.
And I'll just conclude with my line of questioning, as one of many who questioned the implementation of ranked choice voting. My belief is still that education was not appropriate to those that ranked choice voting was meant to serve. Thank you for your testimony.
Well, I do remember you were the petitioner.
That's right.
And I just think, let's take a real substantive analytical look at it, and get, you know, real data that's backed up, and then have answers. And until, like, I think that was when, 2020? What have we done in the last two years to analyze the effectiveness and appropriateness of ranked choice voting? And we should not wait until the next citywide mayoral...
Totally agree with you, Judge. Totally agree with you. I think, my opinion is that the data was in the voting itself. So, we've got our facts when it comes to the voting and the outcome of the voting. People of the city of New York spoke and chose not to use it, in way too many cases for my druthers, but that's just my opinion. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilmember Crystal Hudson as well. Thank you for those answers so far. I'm just going to ask a few, and then I'll turn it over to members. We've seen even this year races nationwide, but even in the city of New York, and for all around the city, races that were determined and decided by just a couple of votes, just a handful of votes, meaning that if we disenfranchise even just a handful of people from voting through long lines, through a bad experience, through voting in the wrong polling place, through their ballot not counting, all the different ways that somebody's vote might not be counted, but not only vote not counted, but they are unhappy or have a bad experience and end up not voting, or see a line that's too long, or early voting doesn't work. It is so essential and important that that experience, the most critical thing we do as Americans, as New Yorkers, is preserved and protected in a way. And I think that kind of nationwide, but here in the city too, a lot of New Yorkers have run into experiences where that has not been a pleasant experience. And we seem to get it wrong. We all complain about it, and we come back and we forget about it, and we maybe pass some laws, and we get back to, we get back to everything else in our lives, and then we do that again. So, knowing there's presidential elections coming up, we're going to kind of go through this again, it's really essential that we take steps now with that, to start looking ahead to what that experience will be like for folks. We have an election this year for city council races, and some judicial races and things like that, but those are not going to compare in terms of turnout. I hope they do, but they're not going to. And so, with those elections coming up, I think we have such a big opportunity, but a demand, to modernize our elections, to make it easier to vote, to not disenfranchise people, even in a quiet way. How do you see your role on the Board of Elections, and what steps do you think the Board can be taking to not just advance for every election we have, including the big ones, to make it easier and make it more accessible, and to modernize our elections for New Yorkers, who I think are quietly demanding that, and will be loudly demanding it when things go wrong again?
Quite honestly, I think that should be a principal mandate. And as I said, as I've said with respect to ranked choice, it shouldn't be that it's wait until the month before the election. The mandate needs to be to address those issues that the voters face on the ground, showing up on any election day. That is, of course, I remember my, as I stood on line for hours in the rain to vote. The line, Councilwoman Brewer will remember, the line snaked around five blocks, six blocks, seven blocks, eight. That is a mandate to figure out how to address the long lines. Now, the question is, that should be a principal mandate, number one. How do you address that mandate with respect to the issues that result from, from that circumstance? Is it more people at the polling sites? Is it to encourage and facilitate more early voting? Is it, as you say, more people at the site, not only pollsters, but inspectors, people working on the site to make it move better? But also, if we really now look at universal early voting, or something that fits into that, we can, we can avoid the five-block-long lines in the rain to vote if we can figure out how to get people to have more accessibility and flexibility and early voting throughout the city. And one of those aspects is, of course, to look at, not yet later, but now, universal early voting sites. But that requires work, work. But also, then, it's the budget question, which is, again, can be addressed. Enough money in the budget to, if you need more pollsters, have more pollsters. If you need to have more people at the site, get, get the budget done that covers what people need. You know, to say, well, we don't have enough people, oh my gosh, broken machines. Maybe we need to have more machines, or have on sites, or on easy access, like not far away, like calling Uber, or Lyft, or whoever you might call, available to come in and address the problem of a machine. That's budget, that's money, that's people. But also, on the other side, as I said, is looking at the universal early voting polling sites.
Just to clarify, universal early voting, meaning an individual in a county or even a city Y could walk into any specific site and vote regardless of where they live? Is that, I'm just clarifying what you mean by universal early voting?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Can you clarify what you mean by universal early voting?
That I don't have to go to the one site that's in my district to early vote. I can go, you can, and that can be exponentially broadened to the degree it can be implemented. That is to say, instead of my one site at PS 96, or, you know, that I can go to any, exponentially, any location in my district, but also then look at the broader possibility of any location in your county. You know, but this is, this is looking at it and then opening it up as a possibility. That's what I mean by universal, not to, and again, this requires, my view, that it's really developed and put forward and analyzed and put before the people before it's implemented. And again, and I mean, this is the way you have to, with anything technologically, you have to make sure you protect private rights and anti-fraud. That's what I mean and view as universal. But I think it needs to be... But I think it needs to be not wedded to a one answer at this point today, but looked at and explored and developed.
Well, I think from voter experience, I think they would appreciate deeply having places. I know candidates won't like it, but I know voters will like it from a standpoint of knowing that they have more opportunities, even throughout their day, to go somewhere and be able to vote without having to pick and know where they're going. I think that would universalize voting in a kind of interesting way. On the topic of polling places, one of the issues I've run into in my district is just a lack of availability for space to be polling places. I represent Upper East Side Manhattan, downtown Stuyvesant Town, and we have a tremendous difficulty finding places. Schools don't want to do it because of the early voting, the implications of early voting, meaning they have to give space away for a week or more for that. We have, we've, you know, been able to now recruit cultural institutions like the Metropolitan Museum of Art to serve as a polling place, which is great, and been able to reconfigure some to be able, on an emergency basis, serve as one. But places are not eager to be polling places. And I find the New York Public Library, I say this to them all the time, they don't serve as polling places, and they do in other burrows, by the way, than in Manhattan. We've had a very difficult path trying to find good early voting places and, of course, always just polling places. And in my experience with the Board, when we sat down and we've had, we've been able to find, working with, in my management in Stuyvesant Town, we've asked them and they've stepped up to service polling places. There's just a need, I think, to both look at where polling places are, make sure they're ADA accessible, make sure they serve all the needs of folks that want to come vote, but it's been quite difficult. One of the things, however, I think, is that I think there's not actually enough utilization of the elected officials to help with that process. I've done it, but not to ask us, because we know these cultural institutions, we know these places and something like that. So one thing I just ask for, especially being, coming from New York County, is a commitment just to work with us more. I don't want favoritism at all about where polling places go. So don't take that to mean that. What I want is more early polling places where we can get them and to open up voting to places. So where it makes sense and where it feels fair, an opportunity to better utilize those in the community or even elected officials to help find more polling places. Because those, I want, the point being to reduce the long lines.
Yes, Jen.
Yeah, so I hope, you know, you'll be open-minded about figuring out ways, outside of the Board's resources, to look for ways to open up more polling places.
What I'd like to say, if I make it through this process, I would really appreciate hearing from people, hearing from people and saying, this is what I need, this is what we need in the community. Can you get this before the commission and to help us develop this and implement it? I believe you got to listen and hear first and foremost when you represent people. So put it before me, let me hear it. And not on the eve or when it's a problem. I'm at the voting place and this is the problem. No, like now, while you have the time and the comfort of the dark winter days and nights, you know, put the ideas before us. But also, think outside of the box. We were able to think so well outside of the box when it came to finding locations for COVID centers, for getting, we, the city, the nation, we thought outside the box of how can we get people to get COVID shots and not get COVID, not get COVID shots, please, get the vaccine without having to go to a hospital. Thought outside the box. Let's think outside the box of other places, like we did with identifying and developing the COVID vaccine network. You know, we have the possibilities, like right now, the possibilities are all out there where people can go and get a, you know, get a booster. Just if we could think outside the box one way, we should be able to try to think outside the box in this way as well. Because nothing is more important, well, not, nothing is more important. High on the importance list is making it flexible and easy for people to vote. You know, for people like me and my family and our generation of going back, voting, we still recognize voting as a privilege and a gift and an obligation because lots of people died and fought and went through all sorts of things to get the voting rights. And so we got to make it accessible for people who want to vote and make those who have been turned off by it not see it as a day off, but a day of duty, you know, a day to do something that people died for. And you still have to fight for it, depending where you are. You read the paper any day. It's still, you know, the resurrection of cutting and chopping at voting rights.
Sadly, we are still fighting for that right in a lot of places. But also, I think it's essential that we make it an easy and pleasant experience when people do it as well, so that they feel like that privilege and that opportunity is really accessible and available to them. I'm going to go to Councilmember Questions now. I also want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Shawna Breu. She is here as well. And we're going to now go to Councilmember Brewer, followed by Councilmember Brooks Powers.
Thank you very much, Judge. I just want to ask, I think that at the polling sites, there's a great improvement on those who are at the polling sites in terms of training. But I just was wondering, we can always improve, and I didn't know if there was some aspect of the courts where there was training that could in fact be used for those who are there early. Five o'clock in the morning is early and it's a long day. But I didn't know if there was something else that you, way in which training could take place that would in fact improve the experience at the site day of or during the nine days in advance.
Well, training to me is, should not just be limited to the pollsters. I think training needs to be universal in the Board of Elections with respect to what we should be doing, how we should be doing it, how we can do it better. Training is essential. And training needs to be made easily accessible so that it's, you know, everybody isn't going to be able to take out their smartphone and deal with, and log in on a Zoom to a training session. You have to think in terms of, there might be, there's lots of people who may need in-person site locations for training. But in addition to site locations and flexibility with respect to providing training, training should include not only, it should include people with information, knowledge about how to better do the job at the Board of Elections with the people who work for the Board of Elections for the benefit of the public. And that, that may include bringing in public officials to talk about things, explain things, bring up issues, you know, and not just, you know, hiring, paying money for consultants to come in and explain and teach, like the issue of universal polling sites. This is not in place in New York, but it's not new in the country. And it could be explained and developed and taught and get feedback and see about the flexibility of it working. Training, training.
I just want to pick up on what the chair said because in Manhattan, we have these senior centers that are not ADA applicable to the Board of Elections. They are older and so the ADA conforms to the feds when the building was built. So we have so many senior centers and buildings where seniors have wheelchairs that go in and out. We're doing this at Garden Riverside. So what I'm trying to say is, we need a wholesale look because people will vote if it's right there in their community. But for the seniors to have to walk five or six blocks, that's a real challenge. So I would love to see an ADA review to see how we could make some of these centers accessible that are not under BOE ADA. And the second thing is, there's been some discussion, because you're absolutely right, we need more locations. When a building gets, buildings used to get 421A. I don't know what's happening in Albany. But when buildings get a tax abatement from the city, it seems to me that they should be able to have voting either for the pre-voting or the day of, but they are refusing.
When you say "they are"?
The building management. So it's, again, would provide some kind of local amenity in terms of space. We are desperate in Manhattan, I can't speak for the other boroughs, for space, as you heard earlier. And we have to, like you said, think outside the box. So getting a tax abatement means you need to participate in your civic duty of having people participate in their civic duty in your building, in your lobby.
I absolutely agree.
Right now, it's not happening. So those are my questions. Thank you very much.
And that needs to be looked at and it's a great idea. But, you know, that's tied to implementation beyond the Board of Elections, which is to say, if you get a tax, if you're getting a tax break from the city, where you don't even have to try to go to the state or the feds necessarily, but if you're getting a tax breaks from the city, tie in that you make sure your building or your location is ADA accessible and that you commit to permitting in a community room of your building, voting. But that's a link and it's beyond just one group. It's beyond one organization, you know, meaning it's beyond the Board of Elections. It almost is back to you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilmember Brooks Powers, followed by Councilmember Breu.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I won't be at Labor, the ranked choice voting conversation. The speaker took a good amount of my questions. But, excuse me, I did want to go a little bit further on ranked choice voting.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the beginning.
I did want to go a little bit further on ranked choice voting, just take it into consideration the role of the Board of Elections members. And as you shared before, you feel like as a judge, you know, that role requires you to uphold the law, which I agree to. But I also believe that the judges have an ability to have a level of discretion.
You're saying the judges have a level of discretion. Go ahead.
Yes, and so in this role, I'm interested in understanding how you would approach it, because some of the feedback that I've received and really saw firsthand was a lack of early education on ranked choice voting. When I ran in a special, I was actually the first to win under the ranked choice voting system. But a lot of it depended on sending out, like the candidates, we sent out our own mail to explain what ranked choice voting was. And at that point, it was not prioritized. There was literally nothing sent out from the Board of Elections. So I thought it was really an injustice to not put a pause on it until it was properly implemented, because we had an entire election cycle without education on it.
When you say an entire election cycle, are you talking?
I'm talking about the special election. There were several special elections that led into the citywide election.
That's right, that's right.
And so the special elections, because I know I reached out to Board of Elections at the time as well, in terms of what information is going to be able to be available, a lot of it rested on CBLs doing the work or the candidates having enough money to do mailers to communicate that to voters. And I thought that was a misstep by the Board of Elections. And so I'm interested in that role, what you would bring to the table and how in that role you would view that implementation process, because this is going to be the next big wave. We have one this year, because all of the council members are for reelection. I really haven't heard anything about ranked choice voting, quite honestly, right now. But even when the citywide races come, what would you be doing in this capacity to make sure that we don't see that going forward?
I'm glad you separated as the judge and then as, thank you very much. And let me just go back to, as a judge, you have discretion, but you don't have discretion with respect to if the, if the, when ranked choice voting was deemed the law, the court's role then was, is to, you know, is the law, can they implement, is it valid, is it invalid? That's analysis, that's law. That's law, that's judge. That's not discretion. That was not discretion. And I believe my decision was pretty long. Do you remember Speaker Adams? I mean, I.
I followed it too, but.
I knew her name was the first name. But I mean, it was, I'm going to look, because if it's not right, I'm going to say, it's not supported and it's not right. I mean, I had my little team and I worked every day, weekends. I, if you notice, I text first thing in the morning, 5:00 AM. I'm going to send out a text if I need to and say, I think we should look at this and develop this, give me the cases on that, let's look at this. There's no law, we got to get this done, work on it, get the answer as best as you can, right, and then understand, I may be wrong. And that's why it's got more courts above me to say, you're wrong. And I, you deal with that. That was with, and I had to see, because when, I remember it was December before the mayoral election, that I started getting the ranked choice voting cases. And it was a question of what is the Board doing with respect to these special elections that are coming up?
Nothing.
And they, oh, the paper, the paper, the paper of what came in. But was it enough to stop the election? My view in the decision, that earlier decision, not the big one, was that it wasn't enough to stop. And I was understood, if it's wrong, I'll be reversed and that's fine. What to do now, not as the judge, retired judge, okay? Retired judge. Make sure it's addressed early, early. And I'm saying as soon as I can. As you can see, I've been taking lots of notes and I, yeah. And that should be one, that and making it, as I said earlier, with respect to Ms. Councilman Powers, making sure the experience on the ground improved that, but make sure ranked choice voting gets a thorough analysis, review, input, input from every end, every avenue, to determine what needs to be done and how it could be done and made better. Whether the Board of Elections got things out as fast as they could have or should have, I'm not going to respond. You know I wrote that decision. I'm not going to respond, but what I personally think. But can it be done and more effectively, more efficiently and early and in every kind of language, in language that everybody can understand? There's no reason it can't, no reason it can't. And it should be. And it should be a mandate, an early mandate. I agree, it should be a mandate.
I appreciate your response. So I just hope that my question on that issue could be the exclamation point to the speakers, just to, just set the tone on ranked choice voting. On the questionnaire, you talked about three changes you believe are needed within the BOE, more transparency, merit-based hiring, and more training. I'd love to walk through each of these in detail in terms of, what do you mean by more transparency and what ways?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
In what ways is the BOE failing to be transparent and how can they improve? You mentioned merit-based hiring. How can the BOE improve its hiring process to be more meritorious? What should it prioritize in the process? And lastly, you talk about more training. How can the BOE better train and prepare the staff for each election?
Well, I think I addressed at least, but I'll come back to it, the training, I would just reiterate, but transparency. To me, transparency has got multi-layered, did I just say transparency has multi-layers? Well, that's contradictory, okay? What I mean is, sessions that are sessions should, to, more focus on being open sessions. Open, available, online, on your phone, open sessions. Not closed in executive session, closed to the public. That to me is a formula for the belief that something's being said and done that's not, that you don't want to see the light of day. More openness, that's transparent. Publication of, and I believe this is done, but, you know, uploading minutes, things like that, that's transparency to me. As I put in the summary of the answers to the questions, I think there is, there is room for both the recommendation and promotion, or not promotion, meaning moving through, but recommendation through the political network and meritorious, meaning qualifications. There's room for both. Everything can be weighted, weighted, W-E-I-G-H, weighted, not W-A-I-T. Weighted and be part of the process. I understand there've been complaints or, no, there've been statements or I've read that people have felt that the people working at the Board of Elections are not qualified, they're just, you know, patronage. Look at it. I think it can be looked at and addressed. And the suggestion of adding a weighted factor of what are your qualifications and backgrounds? Why not? And the last was training. I think I answered training earlier and I would just reiterate that training is, should not only just be for people who do the polls, but people who are working at the Board of Elections, people who are working in the Board of Elections. Everybody needs, training never hurts. As a judge, we do training, we have to do, you know, it's ridiculous. As a judge, we do training, we have to do, you know, it's ridiculously low, but we have to have at least 12 hours of training every year, retraining every year. 12 hours. And we have to be able to show what courses we took, what we attended. And that includes ethics. Ethics is never a bad thing to have to do regularly, by the way. And so, training on a regular basis. That kind of training and renewed continuing training for everybody across the board, from bottom up, from top down.
A very last question for you.
Okay.
You said in your questionnaire that one remedy for long lines at polling places is technological efficiency. How can the BOE improve its technology to be more efficient? Are there any other cities you can point to as models to follow for improvements in this regard?
I would wish I could just tell you from the top of my head where universal polling places has been implemented, but I cannot. It is not new, and it is in place, in places around the country. Is it in places as cities as large as New York City? I don't think so, but can it be looked at? Yes. And that would help alleviate greatly the lines. As I explained earlier, having, putting more money into people at polling places, inspectors. Those things, some of it is money, some of it is training. And also, as I mentioned, which, you know, I compared to, you know, having Uber and Lyft and whatever else you jump into, available, to have the tech people, when there's a breakdown in a problem, have them readily available to be able to drive in, come in, and address whatever the issue is with respect to the breakdowns. The days of breakdowns I find, I vote every election, have been fewer. But I understand that may just be for me on the Upper West Side in Manhattan. I don't know what the circumstance is with breakdowns or problems with voting machines or the, you know, because now we do the computer and then the scanner. But what is the problem? Whatever that is, we need to look at how to better address that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll go to Councilmember Abreu, followed by Councilmember Sanchez and Hudson.
Thank you, Chair Powers and Madam Speaker. Well, I'm just glad and very excited that Judge Edmid is from District 7, from the Upper West Side, and you bring a tremendous, great depth of background. Well, I had a question for you along the same lines as Councilmember Brewer, which is proximity to voting sites is important, as well as when polling sites are set, that they're not changed, let's say, the night before an election, or even two weeks before an election, without that proper notice? So if you could speak to that, that would be great.
Yes, that has been a concern that I've heard in the last month or so. I believe, by the way, just as an aside, this was one of the last cases I did as election. Ms. White, I think, Councilman Abreu? Yeah, before I was reassigned to cover Brooklyn Surrogates Court. Anyway, yes, as I said earlier, yes, the not moving locations without input from community is big, because especially for seniors. It, you know, if you go to where you've always gone and it's not there anymore, and they say, oh, no, now you gotta go five blocks the other way. That's enough of a discouragement if they have to walk past home to get to the next place, they're going home. You know, so locations, not changing the locations without community input, very important. And looking at outside the box, other places where we can facilitate and use voting spaces.
Question about advanced notice before sites are changed.
Of course. And not advanced notice just because everybody is not holding, you know, the Apple 14, is that what it is now? Whatever the last one is. Everyone doesn't have one of those, and everyone, we learned through the pandemic, everyone doesn't have access to a computer. We learned that children couldn't, you know, do remote learning because they didn't have computers. So you have to think in terms of making sure people know on the local level, at the ground level, about location spots. Let, as I mentioned earlier, at the barber shop, the hair salon, the nail salon, the places where people go on a regular basis, that they have the information put up and there. And that takes a little bit of coordination with local groups, which is not that hard to do, I think.
Thank you. And if any councilmembers would like to sign up who are on remote, you can just raise your hand and we'll edge you to the list. We'll now go to Councilmember Sanchez, remote, and then we'll be followed by Councilwoman Hudson.
Hello. Thank you, thank you so much, Chair Powers, and good morning, colleagues. Congratulations on your nomination, Judge. So my question also continues the vein of Councilmember Brooks Powers' question. So in your questionnaire, you said that party recommendations should be weighted, factored, that it's considered, but experience and training should also be weighted factors. So can you, can you talk about how the, how you would, what changes you would make to hiring election inspector and poll clerk positions? One, and two, regarding language access. I represent the Northwest Bronx, District 14, the Kingsbridge, University Heights, Burnside neighborhoods. We are, you know, I have, I don't think it would be an overstatement to say that 50% of our voters are monolingual Spanish speakers. And yet, you know, in my experience last year and prior years, you know, volunteers, the neighbors, are the ones that end up doing translation services or interpretation services for folks that are going into poll sites, because there either aren't enough people who speak Spanish at the poll sites, or, you know, they aren't available during, when the need is there. So the first question on election inspectors and poll clerks, and then the second question about how would you improve language access at poll sites?
With respect to non-English, non-English speaking as a primary language voters, one of the things I suggested, and we do this in the courts, and I don't see, and it could be and should be at every polling site, you can do the dial-in interpreter services. It's a cost, but it's a cost that's worth making. In other words, if someone walks up and says, you know, not English. What's your language? Mandarin. You can dial up. And that person then is on speaker, and they can translate right there at the site, on the phone, on a speakerphone, for that Mandarin speaker. So that that person can, whatever the question is, whatever they need to understand, is right there on the speakerphone with the person standing there, the poll worker here and the phone right there. That is very effective, and it's, and the program is not unique and it's not new. It's not innovative. It's out there. And it can be used and applied to cover non-English speaking as a primary language voters who come in with questions anywhere. It's just a phone. That's one. Weighted and recommended? I, I'm sorry, I moved it. I'm sorry. You know why? Because it's like in my, I feel like I'm not looking at her if I'm in that face. Anyway, okay, I'll move back. So I think the concern about qualifications of employees and workers at the Board of Elections should consider and wait, I G H T, the recommendation of a nomination and the qualifications. So that the concern that people are getting positions that have no idea of what they're supposed to be doing, or what's the best way to do their job, not only at the Board of Elections, but on the ground at the polling sites, that's, and how you would implement that is review how people and policy. It's not, it's not rocket science. It's policy development. In order to get a position as blank, the requirements are blank, and the factors considered are recommendation and qualifications posted, and you go from there. And you see how, if that's really workable, or how it has to be tweaked to put it into place. That's with respect to qualifications and weighted. And I think you might have also said about location of spots. I'm not sure.
No, no, that was Councilmember Shawna Burrell just before, so. No, but I do want to ask a quick follow-up, Judge. And that is, you know, I'm happy to hear you talk about qualifications for these workers, but I would, I would argue that, you know, not having language access live when you go to vote is, it can be just as insurmountable a barrier as a poll site meeting, right? If you go and nobody can explain to you how, how does ranked choice voting work, right? Because we ended up, you know, as was mentioned before, we ended up doing a lot of that education on the spot, even as people were walking in to vote. If you don't have somebody that can speak with you, you know, it's very discouraging. And like I said, in my community, it's, you know, half, close to half of folks are only speaking Spanish. And so, would you, would you be amenable to considering, you know, in qualifications of poll workers, that they speak the language, the language or languages? That's a qualification, you know, speak the language or languages that are most predominant in the neighborhood that you are going to be working in.
I understand how you've modified that. So you've said with respect to poll workers, with, in districts, areas where there is a clear predominant language, that not only if there's a phone access, but those locations have a live, as opposed to, you know, that's contradictory, live person. Come on. What else, what is the alternative to a live person? I don't even want to say. Do you know what I mean? But have a person. And I think that's not hard to implement. That's a great idea. And the idea is that the districts would identify their poll locations. I'm writing while I'm talking to you. Districts would identify their poll locations that have a predominant language. It might be Spanish here. It might be Mandarin there. It might be in Queens. It might be, you know.
It's Bangladesh. What's the language?
What's the Bangladesh? Say it again? Thank you very much. Did you hear her? So where the district identifies the predominant language and shows that there is, this is a need for a person, that gets the person. And that then requires flexibility with respect to allocation of people. Or, as you said, the qualification to be, that's what you said, the qualification to work at a specific site that's been identified as a language-specific site is part of the qualifications to be a poll, why not? That's a great idea. Let me ask you, how come it hasn't been done yet?
I'm not sure, but let's do it. Let's get it done now.
But you see how it starts from the district saying, this district is, we, this is a proposal that this district require poll workers to speak, thank you, because the predominant language in our district is, thank you. You see? So it starts from input. And then, then the basis to put it forward and say, this is where we have to say poll workers are assigned in person, comes then from the board.
Absolutely.
Makes sense.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, Judge, and again, congratulations on your nomination.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. We'll now go to, and we'll be joined by Councilwoman Salamanca as well, and we'll go to Councilmember Hudson, followed by Councilmember Salamanca.
Thank you, Chair. And Judge Edmid, a few of my colleagues have already harped on this issue and you've addressed it, but I just want to say for the record that when the polling sites are changed with little to no advanced notice, excuse me, some of the people who are most impacted are older adults, older adults who've been relying on voting in the same polling locations for years, decades even. And, you know, going back to Councilmember Brewer's comments about ADA accessibility and things like that, there are multiple issues that are compounded when these polling sites are changed, including, and not least of which, is access. And, you know, just the ability for older folks to be able to go downstairs and vote, to go across the street and vote, versus having to travel, you know, great distances with wheelchairs and other types of apparatus. So I just wanted to reiterate that.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Hudson?
Yes, thank you.
I can't agree more. I've said it now, I've been reiterating this from the beginning of this, which is to say, location of poll sites should not be changed with, just because, without input from the community, input from the local leaders, knowledge of, and response with respect to, don't move this one and here's why. And then, if and when they are changed, if and when they are changed, early notice that this location has been changed. And it shouldn't just, I'm one of the seniors, you know, I'm 50 years, not only in the rearview mirror, it's 10 exits or 20 exits back, okay? So I understand people need, people need to be encouraged, not discouraged, because the sites are changed willy-nilly without any input and without any notice. And that is a very, you talk about, you know, people talk about how in the South, in the Southern states, they are doing all kinds of things to thwart voter registration, voter activity. Look at what we're doing right here in New York.
Right.
You move the locations without notice, without input, you're doing the same thing. You know what I'm saying? You don't make it, you don't make language accessibility easy. You're doing the same thing. It doesn't all look like one thing. Discouragement of voter activity doesn't have one face. And it's, you know, New York cannot be hypocritical and complain about what they're doing down South, which when I was growing up, I used to think was a state. You know, in the summer growing up, they would say, oh, so-and-so is going down South. Oh, so-and-so is going down South. Where is that place? I grew up in Queens, so it took me a while. But, you know, you can't just relegate all of that kind of conduct and say, that's what they're doing down there. Look at what we're doing. It's the same discouragement of voter participation.
Absolutely. I just have two other questions. One is that the Board of Elections currently doesn't take public comment at its meetings. There's no briefing of the public on anything. There's no public relations staff, no press conferences. And we've talked a lot about transparency already, but I'd like to know if you're committed to agreeing to change that.
I absolutely am. And I would appreciate, Councilwoman Hudson, if you would, if I make it through this process, you all are really tough, if I make it through this process, that you get those lists of suggestions to me.
Absolutely.
Get it to me. I mean, I've been taking my notes down here in shorthand, but I'm not that good.
Yeah, we'll make sure we get everything to you.
You'll get it to me and I will put it forward. I absolutely agree.
Great. And then lastly, the Board of Elections is inherently political. And so, I'd like to know if you are committed to making independent decisions, or decisions, I should say, independent of political forces, political parties, political entities that might be in your ear, and ensuring that, you know, you're working on behalf of the will of the people. That's my question.
I couldn't say better than the way you've said it, working for the will of all people. I understand that the process has Democrats-appointed commissioners and Republicans-appointed commissioners, but the service is to the entire city and to everyone in the city. And as I put in my little statement, which I was typing at 6:00 this morning because I didn't see the email last night, that, you know, without preference or prejudice. That is to say, without giving anyone more or without taking from anyone else, without preference or prejudice. No bias and no bonuses.
Great, thank you.
Fair and honest and open. And that is all I have ever, you know, that's what I've done as my career, and I'm not trying to change.
Understood.
I'm not trying to change at this point in time in my life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Councilwoman Salamanca to close this out.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations on your nomination. I just to, well, one point and one question. Just want to reiterate what my colleague, Councilmember Benina Sanchez, was saying about translation. I too have a high concentration of Spanish voters. And it's been my experience that some of my polling sites at times don't have appropriate translators. And, you know, a big population of voters in my district are seniors. So having that translator on the phone, it just doesn't feel right for them and they feel uncomfortable voting. And that's just one of the many complaints that I get when I go to my senior centers to speak to my seniors. In terms of polling sites, there's, it's been frustrating where the Board of Elections has changed polling sites very last minute, and us as electeds are not properly notified. And some of these sites are in senior buildings. And so, seniors, when you move these polling sites without proper notification or without ample time, they don't come out and vote. And I think that's another way of voter, you know, suppression. And I really hope that you as, you know, if you get this nomination and you become a commissioner, that's something that you will advocate for when you're working with your borough clerks who are responsible for these. your borough clerks who are responsible for, for these. My, my question though, here, hold on, I had notes here. So in every, so there are five, every borough has its Board of Elections site, correct? And you have permanent employees and you have temporary employees. And what I've noticed is that temporary employees do not have the same benefits as permanent employees, even though they work in the same hours. But what I mean by benefits are, if a temporary employee calls out sick or their vacation days, like a holiday, they do not get paid. But the permanent employees get paid. Is that something that you can look at as a commissioner to see if you can fix? Even though you want to keep them as temporary employees, but they should receive the same benefits of vacation days and sick days as permanent employees?
I hate to sound like a technocrat, but the issue to me is first looking at the budget for the, the offices and how the budget is allocated, how the money is allocated, and what is the job description and benefits that are listed? You have to look at first, where is the money? How is it? In other words, is a temporary employee on a budget line that's different from the permanent employee? And, and when you say, should they get the same annual leave, sick leave, vacation time? It all, it, it all comes back down to budget allocation of funds, because you can't just say, we should give them sick leave, you got to budget it. And so it really comes down to budgeting.
I, I agree with you on the budget. I think you bring up a valid point. But when we're talking about holidays, city holidays, they should be paid for the holiday. They should not, they should not be excluded. And, and, and if they are, I'm asking you as, you know, soon-to-be commissioner, to look at that and see how you can address that.
I will absolutely look at that, but I will ask, as I asked Councilwoman Hudson, please give me that issue in writing detail so I can then not have to rely on my shorthand. Okay?
Thank you.
Because my thing is, I've got to hear from people. I can't, I have no intentions of sitting there in isolation. I have to hear what you want, what you need, what you think should happen, and what you're suggesting, and then let's go from there, and then I can speak with some sense and backup.
Yeah. And, and one last point I would recommend, we're going to do the budget dance soon where we're negotiating the budget. Members, your executive director of the Board of Elections will be present. I recommend that commissioners participate in that, in that hearing as well.
Please make that recommendation.
So you can actually hear what our recommendations are.
And see them, and see them in writing. Please. I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you to all the councilmembers for their questions. I don't think we have any other, anyone else signed up at this point. We're going to do public testimony at the end after we finish with the Board of Corrections. So with that, I'd like to say, again, congratulations to you on your nomination. Thank you for joining us today and providing testimony. You're now excused. And we'll, we'll, if you have any follow-up questions, we'll be in touch. Thanks so much.
Thank you for having me. It's been a pleasure to meet you all.
Thank you. Very nice to see you.
Good day.
Thank you. So as I said, we're going to hear public testimony after we hear from all the candidates. So we are now going to now move on to our hearing for the Board of Corrections. If the candidates would like to come up, they are welcome to come up to the table right now for the BOC candidates. Yep, come on up. And while you're coming up, I'll talk about the Board of Corrections. So moving, the New York City Department of Correction provides for the care, custody, and control of persons accused or convicted of crimes and sentenced to one year of less of jail time. By law, the Board of Correction, or BOC, shall have the power and duty to inspect and visit all institutions and facilities under the jurisdiction of the department at any time. It also must evaluate DOC's performance, establish minimum standards for the care, custody, correction, treatment, supervision, and discipline of all persons held or confined under the jurisdiction of the department, and establish procedures for the hearing of grievances and complaints. The Board of Corrections composed, is composed of nine members. Three members are appointed by the mayor, three by the city council, and three by the mayor on the nomination of the presiding justices of the appellate division of the Supreme Court for the First and Second Judicial Departments. Members are appointed six-year terms and vacancies are filled with the remainder and on an expired term. The mayor designates a chair of the Board of Correction from amongst those members. Although the board members receive no compensation, they may however be reimbursed for expenses incurred in the performance of their duties. Today, we have two candidates before us. We are joined here today by Deanna Hoskins, a resident of Brooklyn who has been nominated by the City Council for appointment to the Board of Correction, serving a six-year term. We're also joined by Dr. Rachel Bedard, a resident of Brooklyn who has been nominated by the Council for appointment to the Board of Correction to serve the remainder of a six-year term that expires on October 12th, 2026. Welcome to both you and, and thank you for being here today. Before I ask you, and I just want to add my own context, which is I was the chair of the Criminal Justice Committee last term, and I cannot, I cannot understate or overstate the importance of the Board of Corrections. It is not only a critical oversight body, which few agencies in the city have, an independent oversight body. It is critical to the mission of what the City Council does in our oversight function to have a well-functioning, well-performing, well-resourced Board of Corrections to make sure that when we are doing our hearings, when we work on legislation, we also have independent body. And it's a resource that, like I said, few other agencies are able to, have on, have on them, but also few are able to help in that manner and form, particularly at this important time, when we talk about what's happening in Rikers Island right now, what the future of our correctional system looks like, to have a, a, to have, these appointments are really critical to the future of our getting, make sure that folks, our correctional system is well, is functioning, that we address outstanding issues in it, and that the folks that are in our custody get the attention that they often need and deserve. When it talks about medical care, when it talks about maintaining the minimum standards and so forth and so on. So thank you both for being here today. If you could raise your hands to be sworn in.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and answer to all council member questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take opening statements from you. We'll start with Ms. Hoskins, and we'll go to Dr. Bedard.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Powers, Speaker Adams, and members of the committee. Thank you for holding this hearing and the opportunity to speak with you all today. I am Deanna Hoskins, President and CEO of Just Leadership USA. I come before you today pursuing a position on the New York City Board of Corrections. As you know, Just Leadership USA was in the trenches, fighting for the plan to close Rikers and build communities. Additionally, I was appointed to the task force to eliminate solitary confinement and create an evidence-based alternative. I ultimately became the motor of consensus between all the stakeholder parties on that task force. I understand that there are important seats to fill on the board. My candidacy is important because, one, my experience is unique. In my career in criminal justice, I have seen the carceral state from all sides of the bar. I have been incarcerated myself, I have been employed in the correctional administration at maximum security facilities, and I have managed federal and state policies overseeing the operations of prisons and jails. I have been involved with over 20 state facilities and at least 80 local jails. I bring a pragmatic advocacy to this board, and I understand how the system works on the inside and how to move the needle on policy matters. While the advocates, city council, administration, union, and docs are all critical players in the journey of revisioning Rikers, it is the Board of Corrections that is the critical foundation that sets standards, policies, procedures, regulations, and directives, all which contribute to the morale, safety, security, and human dignity of staff and those incarcerated. Most importantly, we must center the voices of those who have been experienced by the system and who reflect both the population and the employees at Rikers to be represented on the board. I have been watching closely what is happening at Rikers. We must address the crisis on several fronts. We have to fundamentally change the conditions of incarceration. We have to fundamentally change the conditions of employment. We must fundamentally change how we view all citizens of New York City. Thank you for taking the time to meet with me and discuss how we can possibly work for a safer New York.
Thank you. We've been rejoined by Councilwoman Hudson.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for having me this morning and for considering me for appointment to the New York City Board of Correction. I am an internist, geriatrician, and palliative care physician. I am also a writer, a research fellow at the Institute to End Mass Incarceration at Harvard Law School, and a proud New Yorker. From 2016 to 2022, I worked for Correctional Health Services, the agency that provides health care to detainees in the New York City jail system. I was the first jail-based geriatrician in the country. During my tenure at CHS, I built the Geriatrics and Complex Care Service, an interdisciplinary team that provides health care, court services, and reentry planning to the 200 oldest and sickest people in the jail system. I saw patients several times a week on Rikers Island. I also worked with CHS leadership to expand our compassionate release work, through which we would coordinate with legal advocates and court decision-makers to facilitate release to other settings for people who were dying or who required a higher level of medical care than the jail system can reasonably provide. I worked in the jails during the years when the closed Rikers effort was really gathering steam, when the census was dropping day over day, and when it felt as though there was significant momentum towards a vision of a smaller, safer, fairer jail system in the greatest city in the world. I also worked in the jails as the first wave of the COVID pandemic crashed on our shores, when Rikers Island became the epicenter of viral transmission, not only in the city but in the whole country. I also worked in the jails through the second half of 2020 and all of 2021, when, for various reasons, that momentum towards reform was halted and reversed, and the jails seemed to become more crowded, more violent, and more dysfunctional with each passing week. Colleagues and corrections officers who had worked in the jails for decades told me that they could not remember time when the jails felt as dangerous as they did during those months. And the danger was present and real for all the constituencies on Rikers Island, for the people who were being held there, for their visitors, for the officers and civilian staff of the Department of Correction, and for the health staff and program staff who work on the island every day. In 2019, there were three deaths in jail custody in New York City, the lowest jail mortality rate in New York City history. In 2022, there were 19 deaths in jail custody, the highest jail mortality rate in city, in city history. This has all been a lesson in how challenging jail reform is, how fragile progress can be, how critical it is to have courageous and capable jail leadership, and finally, how very necessary it is to have a strong jail oversight body that holds that leadership to account when it falters. I believe that the Board of Correction is more important now than at any time in recent memory. No other civilian body has unfettered access to visit the jails, to talk to the people who live and work there, to request and analyze jail data, and to make recommendations for change. The Board sets standards that offer the guidance and constraints necessary to reduce harm in a harmful system. The Board is also a vital organ of transparency to the public through its monthly meetings. The jails are a world unto themselves, incredibly difficult to get one's arms around and to understand. I do think that my experience over the past several years makes me uniquely qualified to perform the role of a Board of Correction member, because I have intimate, recent experience working in the facilities and a deep commitment to safeguarding the well-being and human rights of my former patients and my former colleagues. I'm honored to be here today and look forward to taking your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be joined by Councilmember Lincoln Ressler here as well. We are going to move to, I'm going to recognize the speaker for questions, and then I'm actually going to go to members, and then I'll come back and I'll close it out. So we'll now go to Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Welcome again to both of you, and congratulations on your nominations. Ms. Hoskins, as a formerly incarcerated person, could you please point to any specific experiences from that time in your life that shaped your worldview on incarceration?
Yes, thank you. During my incarceration in 1998, one of the unique experiences was my connection with the staff, whether it was the officers or the unit management staff that actually provided and treated me with human dignity and allowed me to know that the transition, the root cause of why I was visiting. The unique thing for me was I was able to attend a community-based correctional facility that focused on treatment, because at the time I suffered with a substance abuse issue, and I've been clean and sober for 24 years since then. But one of the unique things was the treatment that it was possible that I received in that correctional setting, but also having access to skill building, whether it was culinary arts, educational opportunities to advance my education, was all in that situation of it wasn't human warehousing. They were strategically investing in me to actually address the issues that continued my return to incarceration.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
On your victory.
Thank you.
You know, I, I'll ask you this question, I have my own opinion on this, but what are some of the differences that you see from your time being incarcerated and what we're seeing now on Rikers?
Thank you for that. I will take it not only from my incarceration, but my professional working in correctional facilities, jails, and prison. My first visit on Rikers Island was when I became President, CEO of Just Leadership in 2018. And immediately upon arriving on the island, I had the question of check-in to the facility that we were still using paper, that we were not utilizing up-to-date accountability of who was walking behind those walls. And in any prison or jail setting, there has to be an electronic monitoring of who's behind those walls if all chaos and riots breaks out. You need to at least know where all your staff is at all time. So the outdated way that we still operate as a facility that was that large was concerning to me. But also, once I was actually into the intake unit, and I believe the, the cell units were identified, Brooklyn, Bronx, and different things, and they were holding. And what I noticed was there was no proper evaluation of intake. People were just thrown into cells, not understanding were the STG, security threat groups that we were putting all in there, were we evaluating them for their consumption of drugs and alcohol? What was the evaluation process before we actually accepted people into a jail? Because it does lead to overdose and different things. If a person is delivered and you're not doing an evaluation before you accept that person to say, is this person under the consumption of any fentanyl or any other drug evaluated? Do they need to be treated at a hospital prior to being accepted to the jail? Because the liability goes up. That was concerning. And then I visited a program, it was an educational, I believe it was an arts program. And as we were going into the basement where the educational program was, my first concern was the out-of-sight sightlines of where violence could occur. No cameras. If a person was walking down and a rival gang or group was coming up, security, harm could be caused to a person, and security couldn't see it because of the way the facility was built. And the last part was even the fixtures in the facility, we have utilized a temporary structure for a permanent solution, and that is a real actual security threat when you're looking at correctional facilities around inspections.
Thank you very much. Dr. Bedard, what lessons from your frontline experience treating patients in city jails would aid you as a board member?
Thank you for the question. There are many lessons that I, I would think I would bring to this role. So I think it's rare for most physicians to have the experience that I had of spending significant time in a correctional facility. And my specialty was taking care of people who were medically complex, people who were older, and people who were near the end of their lives. And so I had a particular window on the experience of very vulnerable people in this setting and the mismatch between what those people needed in order to be able to stay safe and what the facilities could provide. Rikers Island, as you all know, is a morass of very dilapidated physical plants, right? It's buildings that are crumbling, and the city's commitment has largely been towards, it's been very future-oriented, right? It's been about closing the island and building the borough-based jails without a lot of improvements happening on the island for decades now. I had a patient a few years ago who fell through the floor and was stuck for several hours before he was pulled out with a significant injury, because the buildings are literally crumbling. So one of the things I think that I have unique perspective on, just from having been in the setting, is how dangerous the physical plant is itself and how that contributes to a dangerous environment for everybody.
I appreciate your perspective. You know, I, I share this often. My mother was a correction officer in the 70s and 80s, and I grew up in that culture and hearing horror stories back then. So that said, this is for the both of you, what is your perspective on the borough-based jails?
Thank you for that. So one of the perspectives, as again, as Just Leadership leading some of that work around closing Rikers and building communities, borough-based facilities was one, to have people have access closer to the court systems that they actually are being accused of, understanding that Rikers is a jail. The majority of people are there pre-trial, they haven't been convicted and found guilty of anything. Taking that into consideration, we know the importance of family unification and family connectedness. and family connectedness, keeping people close to their family. But also, the building itself, it was not about just build five borough-based jails. It's about build facilities that not only serve the individuals and what the city needs, but also serves the communities in which they stand. And to the point of even the design committee is, can we design something that actually, that if ever the population got so low that we could close it, can be easily converted into affordable housing or anything of that nature? But one of the biggest things is continuing to look at alternatives to incarceration, that we can continue to shrink the size. But the borough-based facilities, my biggest concern, what I put, is that we're looking at replacing the facility, but are we looking at the morale and the culture that we're transferring? So the harm would be to ensure that we're not creating five mini Rikers in the community. Because while the building is crumbling and we're replacing the building, are we replacing and building up the structure, the policies, the processes, and increasing staff morale as well? Because the individuals who work on Rikers are our community members as well, and we have to take that into consideration. So for me, borough-based facilities are necessity if we want to keep people close, reduce city cost of transporting, running the court system, but also empowering and encouraging our staff that this is not just about monitoring and babysitting individuals who are incarcerated. This is actively being involved in your community. And I honestly believe Rikers Island, when I look at Rikers compared to other states, is one of the largest correctional systems outside of California. And when you look at that, understanding that a lot of individuals who possibly work on the island as officers and different things had other aspirations such as social work, giving back to their community in some kind of way, how do we tap into the passion of the individuals who are working there to see what programming, what we can invest in them so that they can actually reach their full potential as well?
Thank you. Great point. Dr. Bedard?
So I'm generally very much in favor of the borough-based jail plan and was a very strong proponent of it when the council was voting on it a few years ago. However, that's with the caveat that the thing that most appealed to me about the BBJ plan was the implicit census reduction it would require. The council made a commitment at the time to the ambitious goal of getting the jail population to 3,300 folks. Now, that's a very ambitious goal for a city of 8 million people. However, the city articulating a goal to hold fewer than, say, 5,000 people in pre-trial detention felt like a critical step forward to me in creating a smaller and therefore safer jail system. My concern about the BBJ plan as it currently exists in 2023 is that, one, the mayor has pretty explicitly said that he no longer feels beholden to the census reduction plan and that he doesn't think it's a realistic one. And without census reduction, we're building buildings that can't accommodate the current census we have now on the island, right? And if we go forward with that, what we end up with is new facilities in the borough with either overcrowding or folks you have to put in other places, either keeping the island open or using state facilities or what have you. The other concern I have is, as Deanna said, the borough-based jails as envisioned was a huge capital investment, but it was also envisioning facilities that would not just be sort of cleaned up jails, but really would be places that were designed for rehabilitation, right? That created opportunities in their physical design for folks to be safer, but also for folks to participate in planning to have a little bit more independence than they currently have in the jail system. My understanding is that as the project's costs have ballooned and there have been cuts made to the expectations about what we'll be able to pay for in the future, some of those things have been considered bells and whistles and have been taken off the table. And if that's the case, if what we're actually talking about is building five new jails in the burrows that aren't particularly progressive in their design and we're not talking about bringing the census down, I don't know that it achieves any of the initial objectives of the plan.
Very good perspective. You know, as the chair of the committee that presided over the largest, I don't know if you were watching, but it was the largest hearing of that year on the borough-based jails. And it was extremely intense from morning up until about 10 o'clock at night when I gavled out of that session. We were very ambitious. Fast forward now to 2023. Who knew that there was going to be a global pandemic that totally affected everything that good intentions planned for the borough-based jails? So hence, here we are right now, putting aside one administration that dealt with that situation one way, and now we have another administration in totally different circumstances. So it's going to have to be something that we all work with together to try to figure this out. But I absolutely value the opinions of both of you on that situation. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask one question in between my last question. Your perspectives on utilizing one facility just for the women as opposed to the current setup?
Thank you for that question. Gender-specific housing is very important in some aspects. We know a lot of times, and not just women, it happens to males as well, but trauma and abuse is a huge factor. And a lot of times, we do programming or accessibility just in a very specific way, not taking into consideration the impacts that people have, the impact that women may have of coming off of the streets, dealing with an abuser that actually had them involved in that, and how do we work towards that trauma? I struggle, and this is a conversation I've had with advocates, I struggle with saying that people need to be closer to their family members in their barrels and then creating one facility specifically for women that may take those women away from their children and different things. But actually, when we're looking at building the units, having units within the facility that are specific to gender, but that is a conversation. But I also believe we have to have gender-specific programs, access, and housing. But does that require creating one facility for the women that may defeat the initial purpose of keeping women close to their families when their caregivers and other people may be taking care of their children? And even that connection of having access to their mothers is important. I think that's something we really have to consider. Are we actually causing harm to the children, caregivers, by creating one facility that may really pull people away in distance and in accessibility?
I basically agree with everything Deanna said. So I would reiterate that I think gender-specific housing or gender-specific units at a minimum are important in maintaining safety for incarcerated women, incarcerated folks who are transgender or non-binary. And at the same time, especially given that so many of the women incarcerated on Rikers Island are parents, it feels imperative to try to co-locate those folks as close to their family as they can, as we can. And so I am equally sort of loathe to say, let's create an entirely separate facility that is going to centralize where all women are held in the city and therefore make it, you know, more difficult for a mother whose children are in Queens or in the Bronx or what have you to visit her regularly.
Okay. Thank you both. This is my final question. I want to get your perspectives on solitary confinement as it stands right now. Deanna's smiling. As it stands right now, if you would do anything differently when it comes to the facilitation of solitary confinement or if you see the need for it at all?
I guess I'll take the lead on that, having been appointed to that task force to eliminate solitary confinement. One of the things we know is the harm of solitary confinement, and that research demonstrates keeping people withdrawn from human contact, integrating with people causes more harm and trauma than anything. I think the way in which we call it solitary, withdrawing people into themselves and not engaging in anything other than programming. I think there's a level of accountability that has to take in place because one of the things, as we've talked about criminal justice reform, and one of the things even that has been a lesson learned for me around closed Rikers was focusing on the individuals who are incarcerated and not collaborating with the voices of the staff that works there as well, around their safety. So there's this project that I have been a part of with Chicago Beyond called, Do I Have a Right to Feel Safe? And it's taking individuals who've been incarcerated and correctional staff and answering that question. Solitary confinement, in the manner we do it in the United States, is very unconstitutional. I do believe looking at giving officers and staff more tools of accountability to withdraw and hold things as consequences is important. And I also think being held accountable for actions is important, but also instilling due process in how we do that. I don't think we can hold, I don't think we have to not have human dignity involved in people being held accountable for their actions, but we also have to look at what is leading to that action. Are we providing the mental health services that need to be done? We know Rikers Island has become the mental health hospital, the substance abuse treatment, and the housing provider within our city when we look at the population that is there. So how are we actually holding people accountable? The processes of how we house people. Are we housing people that are more threatened in any kind of way? And then what is the protocol of the infrastructure of the building that it's not about solitary confinement? It's about holding accountable and getting to the root cause of why people feel threatened, why people feel the need to continue to act out? And are we addressing the person as a whole? Or are we just addressing the act in which the person is doing, which we never get to solving the problem? So again, as I shared with the doctor, that RMAS was our solution. It wasn't perfect, but it was better than what we had, and we have to be willing to start somewhere. I think one of the biggest things that I learned being a new New York resident for the last five years is that sometimes we get caught up in our own bubble, and if we haven't experienced outside other options, we don't see the possibility of what can be done because we haven't been exposed to that. And I think one of the biggest things that's doing is that individuals are actually starting to partner and reach to outside other states such as Chicago, other cities who have actually had the same situation, and say, what are some of the things you did that can be possible here? We don't have to start from scratch. There are very much evidence-based examples out there we can take from to figure out, how do we incarcerate? I will say this. Jails aren't the problem. It's how we incarcerate that's the problem. And actually looking at how we treat people once they are incarcerated, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to Councilor Hudson.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Sorry. Sorry. You want me to do it? You know, I think there are two purposes for segregating a person who is incarcerated from the rest of the population, and those things get conflated a lot in the way that we talk about this. They're segregating someone for safety reasons, either because they themselves are being victimized or because they are committing aggressions towards others. And they're segregating someone as punishment. The first is absolutely necessary sometimes. It's absolutely necessary sometimes to de-escalate a conflict and to give people space by themselves to cool off where they are being observed closely and safely, but where they aren't in contact with others for a period of time. The second, which is segregating people for punishment, I think we have reams of data at this point to show that it is tantamount to torture and basically counterproductive, right? That it's so traumatizing for folks that it's not rehabilitative at all and that it predisposes folks to come back out and have a harder time reintegrating into the population once they've served that punishment time. So what Deanna was talking about in terms of being able to look at other systems and ways that systems do handle infractions so that there are accountability measures and there are ways to administer discipline when necessary that doesn't involve punitive seg, I think is exactly where we need to be going. And the RMAS is a move towards that. There's lots that I think we could do on that front. But occasionally de-escalating something and having someone have to have a period by themselves makes a lot of sense, and I know that that's been acknowledged in the council solitary bill, et cetera.
Thank you both very much for your insight, for your experience. And again, congratulations on your nomination. I've got to get to another meeting, but I do appreciate your testimony.
Thank you. I'm going to move over now to Councilor Hudson.
Thank you. First, I want to commend the speaker on her two recommendations for the Board of Correction. I think you're both fabulous appointees. I look forward to voting in the affirmative for you both. I think, given the fact that you are formally incarcerated and leading Just Leadership USA, is exactly the type of person that we need on the Board of Correction. And then I just want to mention about Dr. Bedard, who is a constituent of mine and somebody that I worked with when I was Deputy Public Advocate for Community Engagement and have worked with over the years, is somebody who I know will do an honest job on the Board of Correction and make sure that we're holding all the people who need to be held accountable accountable. So thank you both for being here and for your testimonies today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hudson. I know Councilman Ressler, I think, was here to say a supportive statement as well, but had to run to a meeting. I had a couple of questions that I wanted to ask. Some of the speaker had asked a few of them. But as we move forward into, well, let me take us back. Both of you have been long involved in the conversation around criminal justice here in the city, the closed Rikers movement, and obviously directly involved into the Department of Corrections. We have seen a tumultuous few years when it comes to what's been going on there from the outset, I mean, even before COVID, but certainly at the moment of COVID, when any of us who went there, I think, were horrified. And I don't say use the word horrified in a way that I think people, I think people sometimes want to use that word to just use that word, horrified to see how many people were in the holding cells there, in the intake cells, I should say, how few services were being provided to people, medical care that was unable to be performed because of a lack of security to provide to them. Just a, I think anybody of all persuasions politically who went there saw similar things and maybe had different conclusions, but saw similar things. Now we're in a moment where we are in a moment of transition, perhaps when it comes to Rikers, but still seeing deaths that are climbing, conditions that still concern all of us, census number much higher than I think where it is supposed to be for the borough-based jails, so forth and so on. In your best summary, what is the role of the Board of Corrections at this particular time? Where do you see areas of potential improvement if you join the board? That's not a criticism, but areas where you can perhaps expand the role of the Board of Corrections? And where do you see needs at the Board of Correction right now?
Thank you for the question. So in my mind, the Board of Corrections provides sort of two overarching buckets of services. The first is that it's an oversight body, and the second is that, and relatedly, is that it's a body for transparency. And I'd like to speak to the first first. As everybody here knows, the Board of Corrections employs large staff that has unfettered access to the jails to walk around, to see what's going on with their own eyes, to speak to detainees, to speak to officers, to record concerns that they're getting on the ground, to compile that data, and to filter it up to decision-makers at the Board and to the Board members themselves. Board members also have unfettered access to the jails and I do think have an obligation to visit the jails on a regular basis. And for lots of reasons, Rikers is a really hard place to get to, right? People have not always done that as regularly as they might. And it's something I really look forward to doing if I'm appointed, to going and actually seeing what's going on. That's to see with your own eyes what's happening because the jails are such a black box from the outside, and what you get on paper often does not reflect, as you know from your own visits, for example, in 2021, what it actually feels like to be in a room where people are, you know, have been held for days in an intake pen, for example, and are incredibly desperate without medication, et cetera, et cetera. So there's being able to go and see and record, and then there's using your public hearings and meetings effectively to share what you've seen and to hold the corrections officials and et cetera to account for what you've seen. So being able to take what you've seen back and make a meaningful, have meaningful interactions with the jail leadership about what you've actually observed and not just what they're filtering to you with their reports. That's on the transparency side. On the oversight side, there are the Board's minimum standards, right? Which are variably enforced for lots of different reasons. And so I think there is really holding the Department of Correction to account as much as possible to make sure that they're meeting those minimum standards. And then there's the second category in which the Board gets to make recommendations or create new policy for implementation. And in that department, I think one of the things that it behooves the Board And in that department, I think one of the things that it behooves the Board is to be really crystal clear about what the objectives are of a policy that it's designing, and to recognize that it's not the body implementing the policy, it's the body creating the policy guidelines. And so when the Board articulates a minimum standard, that's what it should be doing, it should be articulating a standard, and then it should be working with the Department of Correction, or CHS, or whatever the relevant body might be, to implement that standard in a way that is realistic and pragmatic, given how the jails actually operate. And this is a place where I think there has often been, in the past, some discord between what the Board is sort of handing down from on high and what the folks on the ground feel is, you know, sort of relevant, applicable, and doable in their setting. And so trying to really think about that and bringing my experience of having been recently in the jails to those conversations is something that I really hope to do.
Thank you, Chairman Powers. As Rachel was talking, the role of the Board, one of the things that I immediately realized serving on a task force with the Administrator of Rikers, the Union President, and a representative of the Board, is that there was no relational conversation to even talk about when, as Rachel said, the Board's setting policies but not directing how it's implemented, because that falls on the staff and the officers and the Administrator of Rikers. And I think that disconnect of this is what we want to do caused a lot of tension between the most important parties. And I always say, while the Union pushes back on things and different things, there's still the staff that has to implement it if we're going to see the change we want, right? Because the Board is just here. So how do we work together to ensure that it's realistic, it's pragmatic, but that we're actually building this to move towards a safer facility? Again, because that's going to be very important when we move to our borough-based facilities. The Board has to understand, they set the policies, and they actually have to partner in the implementation.
The other thing that I wanted to say about that was, oh, shoot, wait, I just lost it. If it comes back to me, I will tell you.
All right, we'll look out for it. You, to Ms. Huskins, you had asked about, you had talked about the role of staff being a part of that conversation, and also, obviously, policies making it to the staff level in order to have their participation in whatever those policies are. We are seeing a, and throughout my time in the, as the Chair as well, continued assaults and attacks on the staff there, especially the, I mean, particularly the uniform staff. It is a dangerous environment, no doubt, in my mind, some of the staffing issues contribute to that, but it does predate some of the largest ones as well. And, you know, I think that all of us agree that somebody who's going to work should have a right, if they're going to serve the city, to go home to their families and to be safe in the way we do that. And where I do agree, and I have a lot of my own set of degree statements, often with those, with the folks there, but I also, I have some policy issues, but I, we share that goal, and also I share their concern over, over what happens there and the, that the sort of increased attacks and things like that. What policies, this is for both folks, what policies do you see the Board able to take to protect the folks that work there, and with particularly a focus on the security in terms of the correction officers?
So, thank you for that question. And I'll go back to one of the things I think is the most harmful, is the construction of the facilities, how everyone has to be escorted, how people are actually treated and housed in the facility. But you're right, staff has a right to feel safe. I don't want to work anywhere that I don't feel safe going to work to return home. And I think the Board, for me, has to play a unique role in working with the staff to say, in this current environment, until we are able to transition to a facility, how do we work together to ensure, is that operating in pairs, is that people are not escorted by one officer at a time? How do we actually manage the population that we currently have while actually keeping our staff safe? I think one of the highest population of staff on the island is women, managing some very powerful men, but how is that? How are we handling, how are we transporting? And I think this is where we have to get creative, and it may seem over the top for a lot of people that it's calling for more correctional officers, it's calling for more staff to be on there, but until we can create the policies and the process with a building that people can transport and feel safe, segregating or separating people based on mental health services, substance abuse, and not having those crises that sometimes people walk into, I think we have to learn how to partner, and I'm really looking forward as being a part of the Board, as Rachel said, sitting with staff and individuals to see what it is they need and what's within our wheelhouse, to say we can actually increase and try to increase the safety of those going to work every day.
Just to go back, the thing that I wanted to say before I realized is that the other thing that I would just say about the Board of Corrections is that it's imperative that its interventions and its reports are timely, and that hasn't always been the case. There's often sort of a death report that comes out 18 months after the fact, in which case, a lot of time has passed, right, where it's hard to implement those things in a way that's going to be meaningful and you've let other stuff happen. So I just wanted to put in the record that I think being timely is a critical responsibility of the Board and something that I hope to work on with them. To your question about violence and violence against staff specifically, Deanna mentioned this, but jail is a place of extreme excess human contact, right? We don't allow people on, in the New York City jail system, very much latitude to do almost anything for themselves. We don't let them, you know, walk from their housing area to the clinic on their own, we don't let them go to programming by themselves, et cetera, et cetera. Every, the way that our jail system runs currently requires an officer to have a contact with a person, basically anytime that person's going to do anything from get a meal or change their sweatshirt to go to court, right? And all of those excess contacts create a huge amount of opportunity for conflict and for misunderstanding that easily escalates into violence, and people feel very tense in that environment all the time, right? And so it's, we are sort of, there are thousands of contacts a day that we could potentially, where we could decrease the number of those contacts if we sort of paradoxically allow people more independence, I think. I think you actually create more safety in the jail system. So if you create circumstances where you demonstrate some trust in the detainees by allowing them more independence in safe ways for their own day, you decrease the number of contacts that they need to have with officers, and if you do that, you just decrease the number of opportunities for tension and conflict.
I, oh, good.
I just wanted to follow up on that, because that was something I noticed when I visited Rikers. I had never experienced a jail that all movement was monitored, not even in state prisons, and it was mind-blowing that based on the way the building was constructed, that a person who needed a medical call could not go to a medical call, because you have the system, surveillance, the central control is actually watching them, get on the elevator, the elevator automatically goes to the medical floor, right? So it's exactly what she was saying. That was the only, and I believe it's because of the way it was constructed, but that every movement to visits to doctor, everything had to be escorted, was very, creating those interaction moments that was different.
You know, I think there's a tension always here, though, between those two things, which is if you offer that independence, does it lead to a, I, and I think, I think you're, I recognize sort of the point you're making, I think there's a concern that folks have always, though, that if you do do some of the things talking about that could lead to an adverse income, outcome, rather. Just moving on to a couple more questions. The, this is for Dr. Bedard, you had been there during the height of COVID, I believe if that's correct, and I think had seen and witnessed a lot of the challenges, I think, when it comes to how to provide healthcare in that setting, but also how to address COVID in it. And while we've sort of had to implode in terms of where we are, I think particularly with the numbers right now, we continue to see spikes, and also just the general challenges for provision of healthcare. Can you talk about what challenges you think continue to exist when it comes to providing healthcare and where the Board might be able to address those? And obviously, you're welcome to put that in as well.
Healthcare in general or COVID care specifically?
Healthcare in general, but with an emphasis on COVID.
So to speak to the COVID piece first, you know, I just think there is no worse setting in society for a very highly contagious airborne virus than a correctional facility. And we knew that when we sort of anticipated before the first COVID case had hit New York, right? We were incredibly, incredibly anxious about what the impact would be in the jail system. The, the overall, the response in the first wave of 2020, when New York City was really under siege, was incredibly challenging. Many people got sick, and at the same time, I think, it was relatively successful, and that was for several reasons, but the piece that was sort of most important to me was that there was rapid decarceration of everyone who didn't have to be held in the jails at that time, back to the community, with the idea that simply decanting the buildings, having fewer bodies in the space would help minimize viral transmission. There were lots of other elements, though, to the COVID response that were really critical. And in general, that response relies on being able to, in a timely manner, identify potential cases and isolate those cases, and then quarantine them until the person is better. The COVID response in the jails rises and falls with the general jail dysfunction, right? Like, if, if you are not effectively moving people on time, well, then you're not effectively moving people on time who are sick and need to be taken to isolation, and you're leaving those folks in their housing areas, you're leaving those folks in the intake pens, what have you. And we saw that in the second half of 2021, when the intake pens were consistently so crowded and overflowing, and people were being held for days on end, you know, 100 men to a pen, you know, one COVID case in there is going to spread to everybody else. And so so much of an effective COVID response relies on there being a functional jail system where you're, you can implement protocols reliably and effectively and in a timely way. To the question about, so I guess my answer on how to improve COVID care is two parts. One is to try to get the census down as low as it can be and try to keep it there, and two, to improve general jail function so that you can implement the protocols that exist that were relatively successful in that first wave. Healthcare in general on the island is a challenge, and one of the reasons it's a huge challenge in New York City is because jails are meant to be temporary holding spaces, but in fact, in New York City, people are increasingly held for longer lengths of stay, and the longer that people are held in jails, one, it means that the jail system becomes responsible for care for their chronic conditions in a way that it's not necessarily set up to do so well, and it requires something very different from the health service than what the health service might be oriented towards in another jail system. And two, that people do develop new conditions or get sicker over the time that they're there. I took care of several people over the course of my time working at CHS who were diagnosed with a serious cancer while they were in jail, for example. In those, what I think we want to do there, and this is sort of redundant with my prior answers, is you want to think about what the relevant metrics are for what healthcare in jails should be achieving, right? It's not a place where you're going to, you know, be able to do all the preventive care that you might hope to do for somebody in the community, it just doesn't work that way. You don't know how long people are going to be there, you can't schedule their colonoscopy for four months from now, whatever it is necessarily. So you want to be realistic about what you're actually trying to achieve with jail healthcare, and then you want to orient your policies towards being able to achieve those things and not doing a ton of other redundant work that doesn't necessarily work towards those things. So a good example, I think, is population-based health. CHS has done an incredibly commendable job focusing on hepatitis C treatment. Hepatitis C is an extremely prevalent condition amongst the incarcerated population in New York City. CHS makes a huge effort to identify those folks, diagnose them, prescribe them hepatitis C curative medication, and make sure that they complete the course of that medication. That's absolutely worth the lift, right? There are other things that the health services require to do, like routine check-ins with people who are essentially healthy, that take up a lot of resources and aren't as important, and giving the health service latitude to orient its processes to meet the objectives that really matter, I think, is very important.
Thank you. Totally agree with Rachel on the decarceration strategy and the protocols that were set up during COVID were very successful. One of the things that we saw was, again, that process dropping off once we thought we had hit a neutral level, and then we saw a rise in COVID again. One of the most important things, again, I think we have to go back to intake, when a person enters the island, come across the island, what are the protocols health-wise that we are actually taking a look at evaluating that person? Are we implementing COVID rapid tests on individuals to ensure we're not starting to affect the island again? And how do we separate those individuals? Is there a quarantine time? But also on the healthcare side, we know there's a certain amount of the population that just becomes a revolving door to our local jail, whether it's based on mental health, homelessness, substance abuse. But what is the connection with those individuals once they roll off the island? We know jail is temporary. Do, one of the things we were looking at in having a conversation around the Build Communities component is, how do we create community healthcare centers that possibly have healthcare navigators? I know Yale Medical School has created one in Boston, and it has become very, very successful in keeping people engaged, and what they've started to see is that if people were engaged in healthcare services and access outside the facility, it started to reduce their visits back to the local jail. So some of those things have been on the table for New York City as a conversation, but I think that's a very important one, of those individuals who are diagnosed with some kind of chronic illness when they're on the island, how are we keeping connected when they come back to the community?
Great, thank you. We also have your pre-questions for the hearing, so I think I have a pretty substantive understanding of some of your questions on other issues. So with that, I want to thank you both for joining us here today and providing your testimony and your answers before the hearing as well, and congratulations to both you on your nomination, and just from personal experience, I think you're both, it would be extremely great additions to the Board of Corrections for your experience and your work predating this. And without question, as Criminal Justice Chair, I've had a chance to work with both of you and find you to both be very thoughtful and be able to understand different sides of an equation, even when you may disagree or may have a different opinion, to be able to hear and work with folks. And also, maybe most importantly, as Dr. Bedard said, this also requires individuals to go and visit these facilities, to do some real work, and to be active participants. And to me, that is one of the most, like, important roles of the Board, is to be actually there, seeing it, talking to it, helping the Board manage different aspects of the work that they do. So I feel, I feel both hopeful and confident that you both will live up to that aspect of it, which is to be there and to see it, to understand in real time what those issues are. So thank you for joining us and providing your testimony. You both are excused, and we will, oh, actually, no, before I do anything, just want to check this, we have any other questions for anybody in remote? Okay, you're excused, thank you. Thank you. I'm now going to open up the floor to the public for comments. If there's anyone who would like to speak, you could fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant at Arms, a way to be recognized. If you are on Zoom, you can, I think, use the raise hand function to indicate that you would like to testify. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and if you have a written statement, please provide a copy of that statement to the Sergeant at Arms. Right now, we don't see anyone signed up, so we will give it one more second. And with that, we, a public hearing on these nominees is now closed. I'd like to thank, again, the nominees and members of the public, the Speaker, my colleagues on the committee, committee counsel and staff, and the Sergeant at Arms. This meeting is hereby adjourned.